He's gone.
Jase, no worries. Benjamin, do you do roll call? Please.
Chair. Commissioner Carroll. Commissioner Banford. Commissioner Shulte. Commissioner Spofford.
Here.
Commissioner Newell. And Commissioner Groh and Commissioner Swanson let staff know they wouldn't be present tonight. Coram is present.
Item approval of minutes from the last meeting, April 10th. So everyone had a chance to review. Entertained motion. Or changes, if any. All in favor? Step we have public hearing. Conditional use permit 2505. Dallas United Methodist Church.
So before we jump into that, can I give a statement?
Sure.
Excellent. I know I'm not on the agenda. I'm just gonna cut in if I can. Um, so this week is Public Service Recognition Week. Didn't know if you knew that. I know that because I have a good executive assistant that reminds me of these things. And um, so I wanted to just take the opportunity to come to the boards and commissions that serve the city of Dallas and express just gratitude. And so that's why I'm here. Um, so I want to do that. Um, and I just, you know, as I said, come before the planning commission to just express my gratitude uh, for each of you and the work that you do. Um, there's a lot of experience and knowledge that's around the table. Some of it's missing tonight and that's okay. I'm gonna send him this, you know, right up. It'll be great. Um, so they'll be able to get that. Um, I will certainly say that Dallas is blessed to have such capable and competent people. Um, you know, within our community who have volunteered to serve. Uh, including those that are around the dais tonight. Um, I'm so grateful for your, your time, talents, efforts, energies. Um, you know, sacrifices that you give to be here on behalf of the city of Dallas and its citizens and businesses. Um, your work makes this community just a great place um, for a lot of reasons. Um, I won't go into all those reasons, but I hear about them all the time from, from our citizens and businesses. Um, and they're grateful. They're grateful for the city. Um, this uh, Public Service Recognition Week was established. Um. Not in the constitution, although public service was first kind of recognized in America in the US Constitution by our founding fathers, but it was recognized first as an official kind of week um, by Ronald Reagan in 1985. So we're 40 years in um, to recognizing this week. And as we celebrate this week's 40th anniversary, um, I find it important to reach out and let you hear from me um, that you are important, that the work you do is important, that it's valuable, um, that it's necessary. Um, uh, not only statutorily, but uh, from a livability standpoint and a um, a regulatory standpoint, um, and just a safety standpoint. Um, it's important. Uh, you impact the lives of uh, and the livelihoods of our businesses and our citizens. Um, in the decisions that you make uh, around this dais. Um, some of the cases that you deal with have a, a impact beyond the city of Dallas borders. Um, to impact, you know, some regional and, and even the state. Um, and I know that each of you around this dais take the role seriously. Um, and, and I love the, the direction that Johns wanted to take the, the commission with some committees and and involvement um, to explore as the state is making some statutory changes that affect what you look at traditionally as planning commissions. Um, I think there's opportunity to see, you know, how else can we provide impact? And so I really appreciate kind of proactive role that you're taking and making that uh, be a reality for this commission. Um, so for those that don't know, in my professional background, um, I started working for the federal government as a biologist for the US Forest Service. And then as a wildlife biologist for the Bureau of Land Management. Um, that was great work. I loved it, but I, I quickly found the error of my ways and entered the whole government. Um, working for a community development department in Provo, Utah. Uh, I moved on to work in and with other community development departments in Washington and Oregon for the next 20 years. Uh, I've engaged with many planning commissions and commissioners in that time. Um, and I'm so grateful for, for them uh, and for the work that they gave in their communities and for you and the work that you do here. So just at the end, just wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I say that three more times for those that aren't here. Um, uh, for all that you're doing. Keep up the good work. Uh, you are appreciated. And um, I'll just end with that. So I appreciate you guys being here. Thank you. Yep. I'm gonna try.
Thank you.
Yep. Good night, Sam.
Thanks a lot. Same thing. So we'll now do the public hearing conditional use permit 2505. So a public hearing regarding the property at 565 Southeast Lockrell Drive in Dallas. Uh, it's 6:07 PM. Um, declare this public hearing open. As applicant, application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law over the following statement. The failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to forward the commission and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the state land use board of appeals based on that issue. Please direct all testimony to the record and applicable criteria listed in the staff report or to the criteria in the Dallas Development Code. You believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria far are found in uh, Development Dallas Development Code, Chapter Four. Conditional use permit and site design review approval criteria. Any other applicable code?
That should be good.
This time I'll ask if any member of the planning commission has a conflict of interest, site visit, or ex parte contest to declare. Seeing none. Uh, the hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with a staff report. Followed by questions of staff. Thereafter, we'll hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of 15 minutes. This may be followed by questions from the commission. Thereafter, we'll hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the commission. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. We'll then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all testimony, I'll close the hearing and ask the commission to deliberate and then ask if there is a motion in response to this proposal. In this case, the commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. This time we'll start with the staff report. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, so um, as mentioned, this is located um, at the site of the Dallas United Methodist Church, uh, 565 Southeast Lockreall. Um, so that is uh, immediately north of the Lockreall Middle School. Um, it's uh, on the uh, air photo. It's uh, this building here. There is the, the main worship area, but then they have a series of uh, classrooms and other facilities in this annex here. And so that's the space where they're looking to establish the after-school uh, childcare. Um, they'd be using the existing playground on the opposite side of the parking lot there. Um, with some minor uh, expansion and modification of that play area. Uh, but the majority of the activity would be inside the classroom spaces of the church. Um. The uh, uh, application uh, staff report goes into some greater detail with regards to the actual approval criteria for conditional uses. Um, can uh, daycares are a conditional use, uh, really no matter which zone they end up being located in. Um, but they are allowed in the residential zone, which is uh, where the, the church is located. Um, the applicant has given us a sort of a one-page handout, so you can review that as well at your convenience. Um. But generally speaking, uh, staff were not able to identify any uh, significant uh, concerns regarding the site. Um, it seems to be adequate for the proposed use. Um, there's already uh, you know, children play areas in the immediate vicinity with the, the school and the ball fields immediately adjacent, so um, there don't seem to be, you know, much in the way of concerns with having some children in this area. So um, staff are recommending that the application uh, be approved. Um, with uh, some standard conditions of approval, getting the appropriate uh, building permits and licensure. Um, those sorts of things. Um. So, yeah. It's a pretty short and pretty sweet. Sorry.
No, it's good.
It's not, not a complicated one.
Any questions, staff? We'll now hear from the applicant. Then also please state your name and address for the record. Is the applicant present on Zoom? Oh, there you go.
Yeah. You can hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, great. Uh, my name's Alicia Preston and um, my home address is 432 Yellowstone Drive in Monmouth, but the location here would be 565 Southeast Lockreall Drive um, in Dallas, Oregon at the United Methodist Church. Um, that flyer that I gave you all, I'm so sorry not to be able to be in person with you today. It's just kind of breaking down some of the basics that we outlined in the application, so um, I myself am currently the owner and director of the Early Learning Center for Academia, which is a preschool that's located inside the academy building. And we've been in operation for three years successfully. And we surveyed um, the Dallas community and found that there's a big need for after-school care and summer care for children of the ages of kindergarten through fifth grade. And um, it just so happened that the United Methodist Church was looking for a way to bless the community and using their children's wing for something on more than just Sunday school. They wanted it to be a place where kids could be coming all week long. And so we connected with them. Um, some really great things about this location are that the children's classrooms are already in place. We're not looking at doing construction or renovation. Um, we already brought in the childcare licensing division, DLP, and got pre-certified for this location and they did not have any concerns. Um, we've also had sanitation and fire marshal visits. And all of those things have went um, perfectly, which is great. And then the play structure outside is ready to go and it's already been certified by the state as well. We just have to add about two more inches of pea gravel. Um, which should be really easy. And as far as, you know, impact, when we're thinking about the larger community, this is um, I know Chase mentioned this. This is already located near areas where children are already present and areas that are very busy. And so we don't believe we will be, uh, impact the area. No construction noise because we're not doing any of that. Building septic and water systems already have enough capacity to serve the children. Um, we were approved for 25 children for this space. And so there really are no perceived negative impacts. Um, I know one thing the church and us, we talked a lot about was parking, traffic concerns, things of that nature. Um, and during the summer, we only will have about two or three teachers present at a time because we're not serving, you know, a, a giant number of children. And they'll be able to park in the church staff parking lot. Um, our staff members aren't there during the week typically. And then parents will just be picking up once and dropping off once. And on that map, we kind of highlighted, you know, they'll come in through that main entrance and circle around and exit near the middle school there. So one way in and out. And then during the school year, we've, we've contacted the district and they're willing to bus the kids to the middle school for us from the elementary schools. And so we won't experience any um, traffic backup at all during the school year, which is a very busy time, I know, when buses and things are out. But these kids luckily are just gonna get to ride one of those buses and be dropped off to us and we'll pick them up. Um, and then typically in after-school programs, students depart at different times, so there shouldn't be any major backups um, in that regard either. So yeah, that's a little bit about our project. We're really excited to meet this need in our community. Um, any questions I can answer?
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Doesn't look like any questions. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll now hear from those in attendance tonight. I don't see anyone in attendance. Anyone on Zoom? Okay. So no testimony, no rebuttal. There's nothing further. I'll close the hearing and the commission can deliberate. Those are hearing at 6:16 PM? Any discussion? Okay.
You guys?
Entertain a motion then. Thank you. Second. All those in favor? I? Hope? None? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
The next item on the, on the agenda is Legislative Amendment 2502 Development Code Updates. Uh, type four. Proposed code amendments to the Dallas Development Code, Section 3.6 Regarding Flags and Dallas Development Code, Section 2.2 Regarding Accessory Structures. Wanna go with that? Chase?
Hey, yes. Um. So the uh, uh, so previously, uh, the planning commission, uh, had a public hearing on this uh, item, uh, March 13th. Um. At that time, it seemed there were some uh, concerns with the flag. Uh, the, the code amendment for flags that was going to uh, need a little bit of additional revision uh, before we brought it back to you. And so um. As we have here in the attachments, um, we have, have made those revisions. Uh, specifically the concern under um, uh, the Permanent Sign and Flag Regulations, uh, 3670, uh, Section 7. Uh, there wasn't an upper limit in the original proposal. And so now there is an upper limit of not more than 45 square feet in each area or this uh, in, in area for the uh, commercial and industrial zones. So um, that uh, hopefully uh, addressing the concerns the planning commission had previously. And so staff are recommending that uh, the uh, the code uh, proposal be, be uh, uh, recommended to be forwarded to the city council for uh, hearing and approval.
Yes. Refresh my memory. Hang a garrison flag across Main Street?
So uh, flags that would be across the right-of-way. Um, especially Main Street, which is an ODOT highway. ODOT has a bunch of rules around that. Um, but none of these uh, proposed changes that we have here um, would be for uh, flags in the right-of-way. Um, this would all be for flags on private property. So.
How big is a garrison flag, you know? Is it more than 45 square feet?
Uh, that is a good question and that I don't know off the top of my head.
I ask because a garrison flag is a very big flag, but it's legal. And I guess I could ask Google.
I mean, that's certainly a possibility, yes. Um, the uh, the language here uh, would, would set an upper limit of uh, 45 square feet. Um, for the uh, the, the commercial and industrial zones. Um, for the residential zones. Um, they would be uh, limited to 15 square feet in uh, like residential uh, uses. Um, but then would allow to be larger, up to 45 square feet in non-residential uses like schools, churches. Um, those sorts of non-residential uses that are in residential zones.
In the side code that we're discussing, it's uh, flags endorsed by a government body, so it's not just any flag, right? We're talking state federal government-type flags.
I don't believe it would allow something uh, of, of that kind of size. Uh, again, 45 square feet is kind of the, the maximum that we would allow under this code.
But in, in a commercial environment. If somebody wanted to put up a garrison flag in a commercial environment. I don't understand wh- why we would say no. If it's a, it's an official flag of the government. Is, is that typical that a city would do that? Or is there, is there some particular reason? They wouldn't allow it?
Um, I mean, the, the, sort of the core limitations around uh, First Amendment rights are uh, time, place, and manner. Um, and so kind of what this is getting at is, you know, what is, what are the times that you can have signs and whatnot up? Uh, what is the manner in which you can do so? What are the places that you're allowed to do so? And so um. From a, from a, you know, First Amendment rights standpoint. Um, I believe this would be fairly defensible. Um, now whether we want to have that limitation is a different question. Um, I know historically the city has been pretty restrictive on um, the kinds of signs uh, that we, that we allow. Um, and we have been getting a little more liberal in that regard over the years. Um, but it's still much more restrictive than many other jurisdictions.
What about the city cemetery? Is that different? Is that commercial? Is that different from that commercial?
Um, the city cemetery is actually zoned residential. It'd be one of those uh, uh, non-residential uses in a, in a residential area. I mean, I guess you could argue that they do have residents in the cemetery, but that's not the typical uh, typical way you'd think of residential areas. Um, so that would be allowed up to forty five square feet um, as a, as sort of a permanent flag. Um.
Have we ever allowed a garrison flag?
Not to my knowledge. There's never been uh, to my knowledge, an interest in one, at least not in the time that I've been here. Um, Tom, you've been here longer than I have. Uh, do you recall them putting up uh, any particularly large flags over the years?
No, right.
Yeah. I mean, they, they may have had them in, in like the, the parades at some point, but um.
The fire department puts them up over Main Street infrequently, but it does happen. But it just seems odd to me, and I don't mean to make a fuss over it. I really don't. It just symbol over our country wouldn't be allowed here in, in a commercial environment. So if somebody wanted to do it, like, why not? Wha- what's the argument against it? I, I don't mean to make a fuss. Just go ahead. It just seems
We have time, so.
Look at this, right?
Oh, we have time, so we can talk about.
Yeah, we are noticeably uh, ahead of schedule compared to many of our uh, agendas.
He's going for record. But the city council gets, gets another look at this. And so, okay, that's fine. That's okay.
If I can add to, I mean, it is fairly common for cities to have flag restrictions. Um, it's not just a Dallas thing.
The point of this amendment is to make it more um, to facilitate the use, to, to be able to utilize a flag. It's
This uh, the, the overall scope of this uh, makes it more liberal and where you can have a flag. Um, how you can have a flag, how big of a flag that you can have. Um, so the overall scope of the, the flag section is to make flags uh, more prevalent generally, um, or at least easier to obtain. Um. Yeah.
What about the residential accessory structures? Uh, so this one allows, so the title speaks to resident, well. I guess it's a little misleading. Accessory structures that aren't uninhabited in this case, right?
Yeah, so uh, things that are not accessory dwellings. So things like sheds, workshops, detached garages. Um, carports are uh, carports are really the, the big one that has driven the need for this, but those other categories of accessory structures are also problematic. Um, but really a lot of the prefabricated carports are the, the big challenge that we've been facing. Um, and so this would change the uh, the setback uh, standard for those. Um.
All setbacks. So front side.
Uh, the uh, interior side and the rear yard. So the front yard and the street facing side yard uh, are not proposed for change. Yeah, no, we don't wanna be having a bunch of carports and sheds and people's front yards. That is not, not the intention of this.
Like this is uh, for us to recommend a city council for code updates. So anyone wants to make that motion. Okay. All right, second. Member Schulte. All in favor? I opposed. Okay. Next on the agenda is commissioner comments. Anything to, for the good of the order? We talked a little longer so we couldn't beat the record. So we're close though. Make a good time though. I don't remember. Ten minutes? We, it was another live agenda. Staff comments, legal comments, anything?
And did you have any comments?
I have no comments at this time.
He's just setting the microphone. That way it's official and uh, it was recorded that he had no comments. Um. Yeah, I don't know that I necessarily have any comments for you uh, this go around. Um. So, yeah.
Let's pay for the next meeting. Do you know?
Uh, so we've gotten uh, annexation uh, application uh, that we'll be looking at in July. Um, cause there's some notification timelines that mean they can't make it to the June one. So we'll be looking at that in July. Um. Trying to think of what we have for you in June, and I'm drawing a blank. I wasn't prepared to answer that question. I'm sorry. Um.
I have a presentation for you.
Oh, that's June one? Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, um, I don't think we have anything particularly significant scheduled for June at the moment. Ben, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
And nothing that's come into mind at this moment.
Okay, next meeting is June twelfth. We're adjourned at six twenty nine PM.